Okay. Sorry. Good evening. I would like to call the September 4, 2018 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I don't have any announcements that I can think of for this evening. Is there anyone here that wants to speak about something that's not currently on our agenda? Seeing as none, I will move right into article, well, item one, which is the cannabis bylaws discussion with possible votes.
Thank you so much. I'm Kate Federoff. I'm one of the members of Meteoman Acosta, the Land Use Council, and I can't, am I getting geeked out? And I hope to give you a brief overview of what your options are relative to recreational marijuana in light of what's already been in place. So, do I just hit enter? See, I already screwed it up.
Nope. Down arrow.
Oh, down. Okay. So, just a brief background, the voters in 2016 legalized recreational marijuana. Douglas was a yes town in that vote, so, which circumscribes what your responses can be in terms of regulation. And in response to the passage, you passed a moratorium. Recently, it was modified to eliminate cultivation and manufacture from the moratorium so that you could capture that business enterprise. And the current moratorium relative to the testing facilities, the retailers, and any other kind of marijuana establishment extends until December of 2018. So now is a really great time to address what types of regulations Douglas would like to impose on these types of groups. There we go. Okay, so, again, you're going to have to identify the potential impacts of businesses, identify conflicts and vulnerabilities, and suggest to some of the other bodies that have authority what types of rules and regulations the board envisions for the town. So, and despite the fact that you already have opened the field for cultivation and manufacture, it doesn't mean that it doesn't make sense to explore some regulatory possibilities for those groups as well, and we can touch upon those. So here, this is just for, I don't want to belabor the point, but for your reference later on, if you wanted to take a look at the legislation as it was initially passed and as it was amended, you can look at those sections of the law. Everything that the CCC was required to do, they've done it, and they've started issuing licenses. So provisional licenses have already issued across the state and we're well underway. Again, those groups that I identified can't cite in Douglas yet until December 31, and then subject to the regulations that you may choose to pass should you desire. So, some of the restrictions that you could impose are general bylaw restrictions. So they could be, and oftentimes, some towns are hesitant to have retailers come in. So you can prohibit a certain type of marijuana establishment such as retailers. You could limit the types of, the amount of retailers you have in the town. You could do an absolute prohibition, which you're obviously not going to do because you're allowing cultivation and manufacture at this point in time. But here, because you are a yes community, if you wanted to regulate by putting a restriction, a quota limitation below 20% of your package stores for retailers, for example, that would be a two-prong approach. So you would need a bylaw measure and a ballot measure. Same thing for an absolute prohibition of retailers. You would need a bylaw measure and a ballot measure. And now at this point, because you could put it on the November election ballot, it wouldn't be on the same ballot as the state ballot. You would have a local election ballot, but on that same day to reduce costs. If you wanted to explore that, you should think of it very quickly because we would have to get that information to the clerk's office and just move very quickly. But other restrictions you may want to consider are zoning restrictions. So some communities have cited these marijuana establishments, and it could be just marijuana retailers, whatever your preference is, in certain sections of town. You can do an overlay district, which describes a certain area of town which may cross natural zoning boundaries. You can do a special permit requirement whereby the planning board, or the zoning board, or you, the Board of Selectmen, could be chosen as the special permit granting authority. And if you had a special permit requirement, you could attach certain conditions to approval. So for example, on a cultivator, you may want to have certain HVAC requirements because one of the impacts on a community is the odor or the noise. For retailers, you may impose restrictions on hours. So those are some options that you may want to consider. Another thing that you could consider is becoming the licensing authority. So same as you're the licensing authority for alcohol, you license your package stores and your bars, you could pass a general bylaw which enables you to promulgate regulations and require licenses of these kinds of establishments. And the real beauty of that is that if someone's not being a good partner, they can, you can bring them into a hearing, just like you do with a bar. If there's a repeated bar fights or something like that, you can bring them in for a hearing and consider what kinds of conditions you want to impose. You can suspend, you can revoke the license. So it could give you a lot of authority and control over these types of entities.
Can I ask a quick question?
Please.
On the licensing part?
Yeah.
So I know like with the liquor license, we have ABCC that we have to, that we'd have to deal with. I would assume if we were to become the licensing authority, we'd have to deal with the Cannabis Commission.
So no, it's actually not like that because Chapter 138, which governs alcohol, describes the appeals process. You know exactly, so a rollback doesn't trigger an ABCC hearing, but a suspension may. Okay? So it's all described in Chapter 138, whereas 94G for cannabis does not anticipate that kind of appeal process. So what the appeal would be, would be, I imagine, a writ of certiori, in the nature of certiori, to the Superior Court. And it's kind of like this mechanism that if you have a body that you've been, you've had a hearing before and now you're aggrieved, it gives you a mechanism to appeal where otherwise the avenue isn't spelled out. So it would be directly to Superior Court.
Okay.
The Board of Health now is going to have a big role. Unlike medical marijuana, and I don't know, I don't, do you have a medical marijuana facility in Douglas?
Cultivator, yes.
Oh, cultivator. Okay, yeah. Under medical marijuana, the Board of Health had no role. The DPH did all the inspections and, you know, took over that field. Whereas now, under the new legislation, the CCC has spelled out that cannabis is considered essentially food, so subject to the sanitary code, and your Board of Health is going to have to enact regulations to deal with that new authority. In addition, the Board of Health, under Chapter 111, could also promulgate regulations relative to nuisance. So that would be your odor and your noise complaints again. So you could set it up as a licensure, or you could set it up as they're just responding and reacting to a nuisance complaint, but it's appropriate and already existing in their authority under Chapter 111 to have those kinds of complaints go through the Board of Health. If the Board of Selectmen really wanted to, we could adjust a general bylaw and amend the licensure bylaw if you were inclined to do it, to give you authority to govern or regulate nuisance as well. So that is an option, although the Board of Health already has that authority, so it makes sense to house that in that department. Again, licensure, we already spoke about, and I gave Matt a package with some sample bylaws that you could consider for these, for the regulations if you were to go down that route or avenue of creating the general bylaw to make you the local licensing authority. I gave Matt some sample regulations just for your consideration. So it would be like hours of operation, or, you know, if there were a diversion, to whom would they report, those kinds of things.
Kate, when we talk about quota limitations.
Yeah.
We're talking about the amount of retailers, correct?
That's right.
Okay.
And I'm glad you brought that up because unlike alcohol, which automatically has a limitation in the town based on the census, based on your population, there's no limitation built into the statute for marijuana. So theoretically, it could exceed what you have for marijuana, for alcohol retailers. So it's important to keep that in mind, that it might be something you want to address.
So it's not tied to the amount of, or potentially doesn't have to be tied to the number of alcohol licenses we have?
Right. No, it's not automatically done that way. So you have to pass a general bylaw, which if you went above 20% of retailers, say you said I want 25% of retailers, I don't know how many package stores you have in town.
We have two. Well, three.
Three. So 25% of three is something. So if you, so long as it was 25%, you could do it by general bylaw. Whereas if you went below 20%, it has to be by bylaw and then by ballot.
Is it the license, we have seven. We only give three. Is it on the seven, or is it on the three existing?
It's on alcohol licenses that are issued.
Okay.
Three.
So, in any event, that's a common mistake that municipalities have because they're so used to alcohol that they automatically assume it's the same kind of approach, but it's not. So, and communities that are just wanting to avoid the ballot can do the 20%, but round it up. So long as you're above the 20%, you round up to the next whole number, you won't have to go to a ballot. So again, we talked about the moratorium. We don't need to rehash that because everyone knows it really well. And again, we've talked about this. So because you voted in favor of question four, and this is a critical piece because a lot of people get confused here, it doesn't mean that you can't change your mind. You just have to follow that two-prong approach if you're going to prohibit all marijuana, which you're not, or if you're going to prohibit a specific type of marijuana, or make those limitations that we discussed. And going back there too, a zoning bylaw is not a prohibition. So just by regulating marijuana, you can say, listen, we don't want a marijuana retailer within 500 feet of a school, which is, which is the default, but you can put that, build that into a year zoning bylaw. That's not something that's going to trigger a ballot measure. Imposing conditions is not going to trigger a ballot measure. You can say, I want only retailers to be at least, I don't know, 1,000 feet apart from one another because we don't want the situation of your pharmacies where they're right across the street, you know? For whatever reason, you may choose to do that. Here, we've already covered that. So let's talk more clearly on zoning bylaws because I think that your land use departments are going to want to get some direction from you. So again, there are several mechanisms that the town, if it chose to regulate the marijuana, could take. You could have an overlay district, which just is some sort of artificial creation wherever you feel it's most appropriate. So some towns say, although they have multiple business districts, they only wanted marijuana retailers cited downtown, or they didn't want it downtown and they want it in other business districts. So that could be an example of an overlay district. You can have a special permit requirement, which just requires another level, it requires another level of oversight. You go to the zoning board, planning board, or the Board of Selectmen, and they look at the individual property and decide what kinds of conditions you want to impose to address the particular impacts that may exist because of their exact location. So if they're next to a library, you may have a different set of conditions than if they're, you know, next to the police station. So it's a really good tool. The one thing you cannot do, it's prohibited under the law, is you can't create a bylaw that prevents the conversion of an existing medical facility to a recreational facility. So a medical cultivator can turn to a recreational cultivator under the bylaws. Now, what you do in your host community agreement is another thing because that could be a breach of contract claim, but it can't be in a zoning bylaw. Again, local licensure and permitting, this is a really great tool because you know, you've seen it, I'm sure, you've got the stick of revocation, or suspension, or imposition of conditions for a violation, like you could require a police detail. If someone's not being a good partner, you can react to them in an easier way than, say, a zoning board or a planning board could. HCAs, I'm not sure if your medical facility, you had an HCA in place.
Yes.
So you're familiar with the process. Now they're required by law. It's not just an option that the towns want, did under medical, it's required by law. And what does it allow? It allows community impact fees of up to 3% of gross sales. Those impact fees have to directly relate to the impacts on the town. Now, there are many sort of undocumented impacts or intangible impacts that they're built into the budget, but police resources may be used, or now Board of Health is, it's going to use significant resources, whereas that didn't exist in medical marijuana. So, but the key is you have to really be able to justify because everything relative to impacts is a public record. Now, the impact fees have to sunset after five years. Although we take the position the HCA can last for longer than five years, the impact fees are to sunset. We take the position that the HCA should last longer because, longer than five years, because it sets out the, what you expect from the business agent. It can define how you oversee, or you can veto a manager, or something like that. And more importantly, oftentimes, the community impact fees don't kick in until a couple of years down the road because they wait until final licensure and perhaps they're, wait until they're up and running so that they have some profits to delve into, and you wouldn't want the term of the agreement to end before you are fully paid.
So I have a question on that. Is if the HCA agreement sunsets after five years.
Yeah.
Which primarily, like the impact fee is pretty much the town's source of revenue based off of bringing them in.
Yes.
Can that be renegotiated after year five?
So what I have seen and what I have negotiated is a provision which says after five years, so say in year four, or whenever the fourth year of payment is, that the parties sit down and renegotiate, renegotiate a community impact fee if it's allowable by law. And I think this is going to be something that will be addressed by the legislature because we're not sure yet of what the actual impacts are going to be. And if they're expecting the towns to bear the brunt of just absorbing those impacts, it's not necessarily feasible. So you can negotiate it into the agreement, some kind of more, less clear contractual provision, but a requirement to negotiate in good faith essentially. And then you can deal with it at that time. Hopefully, the legislature would have addressed it at that point.
Yeah, because I think that would be the biggest part of teeth is that, you know, I mean, the big attraction to allow the marijuana facilities in is this is an ancillary revenue stream for the town.
You're right.
And then once, you know, if they sunset it after five years, there's really no source of revenue for the town past that, other than we have an additional strain on our infrastructure where it comes to police and things like that, so.
And to be fair, the counterargument to that is you don't impose those same kind of impact fees on other business entities, and this is why they put the five-year limitation on it, because ultimately, it becomes a part of the community, part of the fabric of the community. And they, meaning the CCC, are not anticipating huge impacts. Manufacturing cultivation are passive, so they don't see a big impact there. I've seen impacts in that monitoring, it's going to be a huge strain on resources. And dealing with these business entities when their machinery starts to fail, so that's when you see the odor problems or the noisy fans, which are actually pretty, it creates quite a negative impact if they're not managing it correctly. So there's that piece. But again, I think there, the idea is to, let's reassess this and see how we feel at that point. But you're right, at this point, there's no guarantee, and you just have to weigh the So if you choose to accept retail into the community, this is a really important component that you can impose a 3% sales tax on marijuana. It's for marijuana retailers only, so not the cultivator to manufacture, transfer, or anything like that. It's just the retail sales. And to do that is very easy, you just, at the next town meeting, vote to accept this particular section of the general law, 64N, Section 3.
So that addresses some of the previous concerns.
Yeah.
Because that would be a revenue stream, but it's only for retail.
It's only for retail.
Okay.
Exactly. Exactly.
And does the operator have a duty to provide financing to the check on the 3%? Or does that go through the state and then they?
So it goes through this, it's the same as any, do you have a hotel tax here?
Meal tax.
Yeah, meals tax. So it will go exactly through the state, the same way.
We have the hotel tax, but no hotels.
No hotels. You're still waiting for them. Yeah. And you can build that into your host community agreement too, that you want oversight of the financials. So maybe on January 1st, you get the, you know, the financials of the company without huge detail. Other regulations you may want to consider is public consumption. You already have one in Douglas, and I read it, and it was sufficient, it was fine. So don't touch that. Again, we touched on the nuisance and sanitary regulations. Marijuana cafes, this is a big hold-on. We're not dealing with it yet, but this is onsite consumption of marijuana, and the legislate, or the CCC rather, hasn't figured out a way to regulate it yet, and they're working on their regulations as we speak. But to allow cafes, there must be a petition signed by at least 10% of the voters, so it's a whole different process unlike any of the other processes I spoke about before. And it must be a ballot measure at a state election. So it's much more difficult to allow the cafe in the town. But if you want them when they do come, that's the mechanism. And that's it. So I'm hopeful that you have some thoughts about where you want to go, or maybe you want to sit and think about it, but now's the time to do something since your moratorium will expire if you want to do something. Other communities have chosen not to create specific bylaws. It's just, they've treated each category as if it were any other category. So a retailer is treated the same way as your toy store would be treated. Your cultivator, they're generally treated not like agriculture because of the nature, they're usually enclosed buildings and warehouses. So they're usually treated as industrial. And what happens there when there is no zoning bylaw which spells out what you're to do with these entities is the building inspector makes a decision, and he decides which category you fit in and whether or not a building permit can issue. And that's what's happened with the cultivators and manufacturers up to this point. So you can choose to not regulate because you don't feel it's going to have, you know, a major impact, or you just want to encourage it, or whatever reason is prompting you. Or you can choose to do so, but if you're choosing to regulate, you should do so fairly quickly so that we can get everything approved by town meeting, and if necessary, put something on the ballot.
I think we definitely want to go the regulation route. I mean, I don't want to leave it wide open, and what seemed appealing to me was having this board as the licensing authority for it, much like we are with the liquor licenses. But I also want it to be relatively flexible, which I like the idea of the overlay districts.
Right.
I want to make it easy for them to come into town, but not too easy.
I think the more parallels with alcohol regulation, the more our path will be clear.
Yeah, because that's like pretty much predetermined.
Right.
That's why, like I said, I like the idea of us being the licensing authority though. I think that makes a lot of sense. So, plus it gives us a lot more control over it, you know, to her point, if there's a bad partner.
Right.
We can just be like, okay, well, we have a process in place for that.
In the statute, is there specific locations that are prohibitive?
So the default, if the town does not impose a zoning bylaw, the default is 500 feet from schools K through 12. But it's different from medical marijuana, which had language where children commonly congregate, so playgrounds were excluded, or if you have little parks where the children go. So it's much clearer and less subjective in the definition, but that's the default.
I think what I'd probably most look for is, I mean, I don't think people really want it downtown. We'd want to kind of push it out.
I don't know what the people want.
And to your point too, some communities, I had one community which made, and you can do this under the legislation, it's expressly stated in the legislation, you can make that default shorter, so you can make a 300-foot setback from schools. And the reason why they did that is they had all these little schools throughout the community, which made it virtually impossible for an establishment to be cited. So they recognized that, and that's why it's really important to get the planning board or the zoning board or your planner involved to, who could identify and really map out where people could cite in town.
I think we're lucky on the school side because we're almost like a campus environment. We pretty much are a cannabis environment.
Okay.
With the exception of the high school.
Even that's a campus.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if we followed the alcohol model, we could have one. If we don't follow that model, we could have three. Can we put a quota on how many we want to see in town?
Yeah, even if you, if you didn't, yeah, you could, you could put a specific number. It would be smart if you were to limit it to say, if you wanted three, three or 20%, whichever is greater, because you may change your mind on issuing alcohol licenses, and so that figure could be bounced up, and then suddenly you're out of compliance, if you understand what I mean.
Yeah, so that 20% could become greater than three.
That's right. That's right. Yeah.
It just makes sense to say we're going to have, like we have with alcohol, we have seven licenses. Okay. Well, we have a one-for-one with the alcohol licensing. We have seven recreational marijuana licenses. Doesn't mean we have to issue all seven, but we have.
Right. Yeah, that's true. It's a good point.
What have our land use committees, planning board, zoning board, have they looked at this? Are they?
My understanding of the process is correct. A draft vehicle would come here first and be referred to the planning board if it's to be a zoning bylaw change. General bylaw change, I think your delegation to them would be discretionary.
Yeah. Typically, the boards of selectmen I've dealt with have drafted the general bylaws with council's help. You can even, you don't have to necessarily require your planning board to do anything in particular, but you can task them with, how do you think it's best appropriate, and see what they come back with. Of course, you're running out of time. They have to have a public hearing on any bylaw change, but you may want to be more actively involved and give But you may want to be more actively involved and give them guidelines. You know, I don't know how the boards interact here.
Is there anything in the statute, or do we have the power to require, say, an exclusive business? In other words, that's all they market, is cannabis, rather than an existing retailer wanting to add that to their, the things that they sell?
Yeah. And I think it's a sensible regulation, too, because of the security concerns. And frankly, I don't see how you could marry a non-marijuana business and a marijuana business because of those restrictions. So, for example, under the CCC regs, you cannot enter. Unlike when I go to the package store to buy a six-pack of beer, I can bring my child along with me. You cannot enter if you're not 21. Or on the medical side, if you're a card-carry person. But, so I don't see how they would necessarily work. But that said, I think you could enact a regulation for that.
We want to find the most streamlined way to get this through, because we are coming up on Fall Town Meeting.
When is your town meeting?
Hasn't been set yet, right?
Sometime in November.
Right around Veterans Day.
Around Veterans Day.
So realistically speaking, if we were to make decisions, say, we decide we're the licensing authority, the limitation on licensing is cannabis-only.
Right.
And we decide to go with an overlay district with a 3% tax on it, how hard would it be to draft that up?
For me, it would be easy, except for defining what the overlay district would look like. And I would have to rely on the planner to carve out that overlay district for me.
I'm like, the question about, instead of zoning and overlay district, if we're going to treat it sort of like alcohol, why wouldn't we follow those same parameters in terms of, we're alcohol? Package stores are allowed to locate.
I think there's a feeling, and it's been expressed here before, that there'd be some resistance to putting it downtown. And I think that's something we have to talk about as a board.
Some of the downtown.
See, there may be, but I'm not sure.
I'm not sure either.
You know?
We've discussed that.
Because downtown's the most convenient place.
Yeah. Where else would there be space available?
Yeah.
Where somebody puts up a new building.
Yeah.
16? How much?
So.
Up by the Webster line?
A couple of our communities have put on several bylaws, because, like you, they weren't certain how the residents felt. And so I can think of one town that did a total prohibition. They were a no-town, so it just had to pass by law. But they did a total prohibition, and then the event that failed, they put on a zoning bylaw. But similarly, you could put on two competing zoning bylaws and have an overlay district, or just treat it like any other industry that's, you know, if it's a business, it can go in the various business districts.
Any type of retail establishment, wherever they can locate.
Exactly. Exactly. So you could do that. And the difficult part is explaining it to town meetings. So what we did was, like, have a PowerPoint to say, if this article passes, then we pass over this one, or whatever you do, indefinitely postpone, or dismiss, or whatever your procedural mechanism is. But if this one passes, we dismiss this one. If this one fails, we move to this one and consider it. And so you can inform the public in advance what these two proposals mean and where they would locate, and then proceed with going down and saying, okay, let's take Article 1, for example. So that's an option if you don't have time for public hearings. And frankly, the public hearings don't have huge attendance. You have a much better turnout, obviously, at town meetings. So you don't necessarily know the true temperature of the town until you get to town meeting that night.
Well, if we craft it right, we may not even need to do a zoning overlay. Because if you think about the statute that's already sitting in there regarding how far you can be to a school. And then you look at the downtown real estate, and if we say, all right, we're expanding from 500 feet to 900 feet, you pretty much alleviated most of downtown.
I think Mike put his finger on it. We have to decide how we want to do this, what we want to do. I think how we envision it.
Because I'm not sure we want to eliminate downtown. You know, I know there's been some discussion. But again, you know, that's where it makes the most sense for a business like this to locate. And it's the most convenient place for people to go. So I'm not sure where else you would put it.
It's true. I mean, I think we cover most of it by us being the licensing authority. I think that we can do case-by-case. And when somebody's coming in for a license, if there's a bunch of people that are objected to it, you'll know it pretty quick, because you look out and see people in chairs and go, okay.
And the other thing, too, is I think we'd want to think about a restriction around how close you can locate these establishments. So it's 1,000 feet, 2,000 feet from each other.
From each other.
Yeah. But come up with some restriction around, you know, so we're not having the problem with sort of having, like, three package stores and, you know, 1,000 feet of each other.
So if you're talking distances, this is the one thing to be super careful of. Because, again, your licensing authority would come from a general bylaw. But when you start talking distances apart from one another, it sounds a lot like zoning. And there's case law that stands for the proposition that if it looks like a zoning bylaw, acts like a zoning bylaw, but you call it a general bylaw, it's still a zoning bylaw. And so they've overturned it. Because, and this is the reason why, and it's the quantum of vote. So they say you didn't do all the procedural steps to make this piece of local legislation valid. So the planning board hearing, the 2/3 majority vote, and so they've struck it down. It's happened with, it wasn't smelting, but some heavy industrial use that they tried to regulate in the town through general bylaw. So when you start talking about distances, just be careful that you don't tread into those zoning waters.
We don't have a tremendous amount of retail space open and available right now in downtown, anyway.
Well, some of it sort of turns over, though.
Yeah, it does turn over. And given the opportunity.
So you could technically have two establishments right next door to each other.
You could. But I mean, to at least get us, my only concern is, is I'm not wholeheartedly confident that we'll get all of the zoning stuff done in time for town meeting.
See, I don't think we will, either.
So, and it's one of those things, that if we can get the licensing aspect of it started upfront, we could probably get zoning completed for a spring town meeting and then do an amendment at that point in time.
Yeah.
See, I don't think we have clear direction either, in terms of what that zoning needs to look like.
Because of the time. I mean, I don't, the biggest thing that I don't want to see us do is sit here and deliberate, and then we go past town meeting and we can do nothing. So, I mean, something on the books where we've at least got a direction that we're heading on.
We can fine-tune it if we need to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense. What's the disadvantage of not doing anything with the zoning bylaws and just?
So the disadvantage is grandfather rights, because unlike general bylaws where grandfather rights don't attach, zoning bylaws, you have to be concerned that there's a grandfather piece. So, you know, they could file for a building permit before even reaching you all as the licensing authority. But that said, you have a lot of power with the license, the issuance of the licensure to, you've got a lot of discretion, and more importantly, too, in your HCA, because not only is, so the licensing piece could theoretically be challenged if you didn't have justification for denying the license, right? Are you being arbitrary and capricious? But the host community agreement is a really important tool, because you cannot force people to contract with one another. And the HCA is a requirement of law. So that's where you have a lot of authority, too. So you could avoid some of the grandfathering by holding up that process. And frankly, I don't know that folks who are looking to cite in a particular town, they have a lot of other opportunities, they're not going to come in and fight to get here, unless, there are some communities where they know where they're already cited, because whatever reason, there's a dispensary or something that's a natural conversion. But if you don't have that in existence here, if they see they're going to have a fight on their hands, they probably will just choose to go somewhere else. Not guaranteeing anything, but that's the worst risk you face.
There doesn't seem like any rush to do anything with zoning right now, then.
No, the biggest thing is just to get something.
I think the licensing is the most important side of it. That's my opinion.
Take care of this in the fall.
Spring.
The drafting of bylaw right now, that sort of spells out that we would act as the licensing.
I'd agree with that.
I think the licensing needs to stay here. Could you just refresh quickly the November ballot question?
Mm-hmm.
What would that, why would we do that?
So that's only if you're looking to prohibit or to limit below the 20% on retailers. So, and because you voted yes, they make it, the legislation made it more difficult for you to decide, we don't want this here in Douglas, so they gave you that two-step process. And the only reason why I suggested the November ballot was completely arbitrary money-saving mechanism to avoid having, you know, your detail officers and your counters and all that, and repeating it at a local election, which you can hold at any time. You know, I was just saying, you could slide it into that date if you wanted to and save a little bit of money, not all that much money, from what the town clerks tell me.
I think it's a fair statement, we're not likely to prohibit, correct?
Yeah.
And we talk about the 20%, that would leave us with one.
But we talked up to three.
So we could modify.
So we're not tied to that November ballot in that regard.
And if we want to increase that, to say it mirrors exactly what we have for alcohol licenses, there's no legislation or anything that we'd have to file for that. We can say Douglas has seven licenses, period.
Yeah, so long as you're above the 20%, you just put that in a bylaw, and you just need town meeting approval. And if you wanted to modify it from one or 20% to three, which is beyond the 20%, you just modify that the next town meeting. That's, you know, what some other communities are doing right now, because they realized they wanted that revenue stream and.
I would have just said, come out of the gate with three or more.
Yeah, I would say three seems like a reasonable number. Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Please.
So, an establishment would need to be licensed, if we were the licensing board, by us first. People in the Cannabis Commission would then issue a license.
So, yes, before they issue their final license, for sure. So the process at the Cannabis Control Commission is, they file the application of intent. And what has to go along with that application was, is a host community agreement, so a certification, they've executed a host community agreement, rather, they don't see the host community agreement itself, although that is a public document. And they have to have held a community impact outreach meeting. And they have to review the existing bylaws, zoning bylaws and licensure requirements to say that they will be able to comply. So if the zoning bylaw said you can't be within 600 feet of a school, and they know they're 500 feet, they can't certify that they'll be able to comply later on. So they don't need your license immediately, once they file their application of intent. But before they get their final license, everything has to be in place. And I believe they even need a building permit. Yeah.
And we can assign whatever fee we'd like to off of the license, the local Douglas license, correct?
So what I have suggested is that the revenue to address the impacts of the community are really captured in that 3% community impact fees. And your licensure fees should be similar to what you charge for alcohol. So I'm sure you're charging a couple thousand dollars. No?
No, I wasn't planning on that, but.
Oh, you aren't. Okay, so I don't know what you charge for alcohol licenses.
800 for beer and wine, and I think 1,000 for all alcohol.
Yeah, so you would make that kind of similar fee. Yeah. Because the reason why you can't charge a huge exorbitant amount is then it could be considered an illegal tax. So a fee has to be reasonably related to the costs for advertising and hearings and what have you.
If we parallel everything to the liquor licenses.
I think that we're covered. So if we charge $1,000 for a liquor license, we can charge $1,000 for recreational marijuana.
You're in good shape. Yeah, yeah.
One more question along those lines. If we authorize, just for example, say, we have seven liquor licenses, we authorize seven sales, there's nothing, just like with a liquor license, that requires us to take every applicant, correct?
Yeah, you can't discriminate, obviously, and do anything that you wouldn't do under alcohol. But you're right, you can't be forced to issue the license. You should be able to justify the reasons for not, you know, issuing the license. So I'm sure for alcohol is, there's sufficient need, and there's an amount of need, and what you have in the three package stores meets that need. So it's not spelled out the same way in this legislation as it is in alcohol, but if you can justify it in that same kind of way, we don't need 10 marijuana retailers in Douglas because, you know, we only need one, or whatever. You can justify it, and it's defensible.
Thank you.
I'm satisfied.
I'm good.
So on its said possible votes, we need to vote on this tonight, Matt?
Well, if, what I heard you say is that your first step is you want a licensing regimen, cannabis only, 3% tax, some restriction on, well, no, you kind of went past that. Three licenses and a licensing fee that mirrors alcohol. If that's the direction of the board, then we'll come up with a draft ordinance that captures those points and.
Yeah.
Put it to you quickly.
Does that sound about right to you guys?
I think so.
That sounds right, doesn't it?
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I just ask, out of curiosity, is anyone here in the meeting tonight in opposition to what we discussed tonight?
This is for recreational.
Sales.
Sales. I disagree, but I was a no-vote at the election in 2016 as well, so.
Is that why you're here tonight?
No.
No? Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. So with the 500-foot rule where children congregate, is that where they live as well?
No, and that was under medical marijuana, so that same provision doesn't apply in recreational marijuana. They made it less stringent under recreation. And I think what's going to happen is when the CCC finally takes over medical, which is expected to happen soon, although I think they're going to have to delay it, they're going to marry that provision and make it all a little less restrictive. But under recreational, it's 500 feet from K through 12 schools. So, and under the medical, just out of curiosity, if you're curious, it was contemplating things like playgrounds and things like that, because you couldn't necessarily figure out where children were living. Presumably, they're living pretty much everywhere, so. But it was more, it was intended to deal with playgrounds or, you know, bouncy house places and things like that.
Okay, and then the other question is, Board of Health. Does the town have enough for the Board of Health to monitor what's going on?
There's sufficiently.
Resources?
I would say so.
I don't know that we don't. I haven't heard that we don't.
Because the way it was stated before was it's supposed to go through the zoning officer, not the Board of Health?
Well, a couple of things. So under medical marijuana, DPH did the inspection. So you know how the Board of Health goes out and inspects restaurants and for sanitary conditions and things like that. That didn't exist as a regulatory possibility under medical marijuana. Whereas now, because of the way they classified marijuana, Boards of Health have jurisdiction. So they'll go in to look, to make sure the place is clean, to make sure there's no mold growing on the plants and things like that.
Older?
Older. So they have to deal with that in terms of regulations. So they would have to pass, promulgate regulations, which they can do. They don't need town meeting approval. They just have to have a public hearing under Chapter 111, which is the state law. And they promulgate rules and regulations that way. So it's essentially, it would take them a couple of weeks, whereas if we're dealing with Board of Selectmen licensure, we need first town meeting approval before they can do anything. So the Board of Health is a lot more flexible and can address these situations. And if you'd like, I can forward on to the Board of Health these draft or sample regulations that I have, and they can consider it if you'd like.
That would make sense.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Gives you a good starting point.
Yeah. And it's completely, you know, they can revise it however they deem appropriate, and it's really locally specific, so.
I definitely think they're adequately staffed for it now, and if they're not, then we can address that at a later date.
Yeah.
Only because the zoning officer is part-time for town, and he's usually only here on Fridays for inspections. So if you have an issue Monday... So if you have an issue Monday with a heavy odor, you're gonna have to wait until Friday, but then by then, they could've already cleaned up the issue.
Yeah, and for odor, the zoning officer wouldn't have jurisdiction anyway. So, unless it was some sort of special condition of their approval, if they had required a special permit or something like that, and they were violating a condition of approval from one of the land use bodies, but he, as a matter of course, couldn't go out on a nuisance complaint. And that's what that would be. Whereas the Board of Health, with a quick few actions, can have the authority to do so. And theoretically, they could do it now, it would just be a less clear process and ultimately would end in court, so...
And Board of Health is here every day, right, Matt?
There's staff here every day, and they have agents available.
I should've gone through the chair, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay. Go ahead, Scott.
Just an observation. So you said that you could issue, for instance, three or 20%, whichever is greater, and Selectmen thought about maybe issuing a higher number of seven, with the idea that they could not issue more, but they'd have some more to grow. But then you said something else later on, you said you can't discriminate. So, if you make it seven, and you receive seven applications that on their merits are all exactly the same, you're gonna have seven, right?
Yeah.
Otherwise, you're gonna wind up in court, and then you have seven anyways.
Well, there's always a risk of court challenge to anything, to be frank, and, but the important point is justification. And if you look at the applications, and you could do it on a first-come, first-served basis, or the licensing body could feel more comfortable, for example, with the financial backing of a particular entity, whereas another looked a little bit, they were greener.
All right. You had that one in your pocket, haven't you?
Waiting to use that. You know, there can be a lot of reasons to justify the denial of a license, you know, their manager isn't...
Can you use market saturation?
Market saturation could be a justification for sure, although I caution you that unlike alcohol, where the statute spells out, is there a need, right, that's one of the elements, is there a need that you're trying to fulfill? This statute doesn't specify that, so it is a little more risky. They didn't mirror it exactly, and I'm not exactly sure why they wouldn't have drawn more from alcohol, because then we would've had a lot more experience, but there is a risk to challenge in almost anything.
So it probably makes more sense to just have it at three, and if we need to increase at a later date, we do it through another bylaw amendment. So start low and work your way up.
Good, so I can, I'll revise the bylaw proposal that I sent to incorporate your thoughts, and I'll give you the language you'll need to accept the tax, the local tax statute, and I'll forward the regs to the Board of Health. And then, once we get those things, which are sort of more immediate needs, you can chew on some of the regulations that you'll promulgate once that bylaw passes at town meeting, to see what you're really thinking. Hours of operation are critical, obviously not for cultivators and manufacturers, they're gonna be operating 24 hours a day, because plants continue to grow. You know, maybe they only have employees there at certain times, or whatever you want to do to deal with the groups. The way I, the way I wrote my regulations, and everyone can, you can do what you'd like, but I made separate regulations for retailers, because I view that as having a much different impact than the other entities, because it's passive versus active activity, so... But it's at your pleasure.
Is there anything in the statute relative to pricing of the product?
No, so...
Free capitalism or...
You can't do things like giveaways and coupons and things like that.
Door-to-door sales, that's out.
Door-to-door sales is out. So, they're essentially trying to prevent diversions, but there's no cap on what you can charge. So, and that's why I don't, I'm not sure if you all have read some of the literature, either in the Globe or CCC bulletins, but they're really trying to attack the community's rights to extract impact fees, because they want to keep the prices of marijuana low so as to detract from the black market. But there is no cap on price in the legislation.
I think if we're trying to maximize revenue for the town, it might be better with three, rather than having six or seven, each cutting up the market and failing and creating problems.
Agreed.
Yep.
All right, is there anything else on this?
No, this was helpful.
All right.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks so much for having me.
Glad you got to use your green comment.
I hope I didn't get into the weeds too much.
Take care. All right, so this brings us to our second agenda item, which is the Jim Wall Tiger discussion. Before we actually kick off into this, I am limiting the discussion on this tonight to 20 minutes. I'm throwing some ground rules down on it upfront, because things tend to get nasty relatively quickly. So this is here to express residents of Douglas's concerns over the painting that had taken place in the gym here at the municipal center. As the chairman, I'm not gonna tolerate any personal attacks on any one person or another. You're more than welcome to express your concern. I ask that when you do stand up to address the board, that you state your name and your address as proof of being a Douglas resident. And as I said, I'd ask that we keep our commentary on point, on topic, and respectful. If I see it's going south, I will rule the conversation out of order very quickly. If you choose to talk over the chair when I rule you out of order, you'll be asked to, basically you'll be removed very quickly. So, with that being said, I know I do have Ryan Hogan here from the Douglas Youth Basketball Organization that wish to speak on the subject first. I'd like to give him the opportunity to do that, and then I'll open it up to people that have concerns or questions.
Mr. Chairman, can I just say that stating their name and address is also for the record for the minutes, that's part of the, part of the record that we have to keep for the minutes, so it's not just proving that they're residents.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I always like it when you correct.
I'm not correct.
Gently, though.
Gently.
It's for the public.
We'll call that a gentle reminder.
For the public, so they know why we're asking this.
I need that, I get lost quickly. Ryan, it's all you.
I'm Ryan Hogan at 10 Darling Way in Douglas. I'm just gonna read from a letter I posted on our website, seven to 10 days after the painting happens. Here's a summary of the issue from our perspective and just our thoughts on the issue. Douglas Youth Basketball typically does one or two maintenance projects each offseason in the Douglas Municipal Center Gym to keep it in the best condition possible. Our organization spends on average over $3,000 per year in the gym in terms of upgrades and maintenance. This spring, one of our board members wrote to the Sheriff's Department to see if they would come and paint the walls as a community service project. They responded positively and scheduled to do the work the second week of July. Douglas Youth Basketball spent over $1,000 in supplies and equipment to support the generously donated manpower of the Sheriff's Department for the project. The Douglas Youth Basketball Board of Directors met in late May to discuss the project and voted unanimously to approve it. I asked members to reach out to people in the community to see if the Tiger mural currently painted on the wall held any historical significance for the town. Numerous community members were polled, and none gave us any indication that town citizens who attended school in the municipal center might be upset by our decision. After a lengthy discussion, a unanimous vote was taken to paint over the mural to give the gym a more updated look, fitting in with the new floor, baskets and team chairs. In appreciation of Rose Minier's contribution to the town, we also unanimously voted to honor the mural with framed dedication in the hallway or foyer of the building. Douglas Youth Basketball sincerely apologizes to anyone who is upset by this decision. It was certainly not our intent to disrespect the town's history. We were attempting to improve the facility so that the Municipal Center Gym can continue to be an active and vibrant part of the town. We regret that our efforts to do something positive for the community has upset some residents. We continue to thank the town for the use of gymnasium and hope to continue to make improvements for the benefit of the community. The Sheriff's Department has agreed to come back to put a second paint of the walls, and other improvements are planned in the upcoming months. Ryan Hogan, President of Douglas Youth Basketball.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ryan.
Sure.
So, I know Matt and I had discussed at one point when this all started breaking out, is moving forward, putting policy in place regarding, you know, the use or facilities or any improvements or changes being done. We put together a scope of work, asked it to come in front of the board. Certainly, we appreciate, we know your heart was in the right place, and you had all good intentions of what you were trying to do, and it wasn't as well-received as all it hoped.
Correct.
So, in an effort to make sure that we don't run into or have history repeat itself, we'd ask that, like, you know, we bring a scope of work in front of the board, we sit down, we look at it, make it open to the public so they have a chance to weigh in. If nobody has any objections, by all means, move forward. Any improvement to the town by any volunteer is greatly appreciated, as long as it's not at the detriment of anything else. Does that make sense? So, I'm assuming I've got some folks that are here that wish to speak on it, and I see Mr. Yucino.
Hi.
You certainly can.
Well, he comes up, we've seen the draft, we've seen the letter that outlined potentially what might be in that policy.
Yep.
So, those of you that don't mean all the time to ramble, so I wrote it down, so I'll try to keep it short.
I see it's only one page.
It's only one page.
He's got a lot more back there. He's gonna have Nick throw him up in paper airplanes for him.
So I'm Scott Yucino, 22 Gilbault Court, Douglas. And I'd like to speak about the loss of the Tiger mural in the gymnasium, the reaction of the group that decided to remove it, and where I think we should go from here to prevent it from happening again. First, how a private group was able to receive permission to alter town property seems problematic to me. The initial response by the members of the group to people who expressed outrage only added to the emotion. Some suggested if you wanted some say in how things are done, you should step up and volunteer to have a voice. That's probably the most offensive and arrogant thing I heard. For someone to suggest that volunteering with a private group gives you the right to alter public property is arrogant and offensive. It also seems to indicate to me that since I'm not a volunteer with that particular private organization, I have no say in the actions that are taken, like painting over the mural in a public place. The Tiger that was on the wall in the gym has been there since the mid-1970s. It was painted by a student to show pride in the school and in the community. Over the years, when people walked into that gym and saw the mural, it brought back feelings of town and school spirit. When visiting teams walked into the gymnasium, they were greeted by a tangible representation of Douglas Tiger pride. To those of us who were here at that time, when it was unveiled, it means more than four colors of paint taking up space on the wall. The explanation of how the mural came to be removed has fallen a little short. The reasoning is that apparently the Tiger doesn't conform to the view of the private organization, that we are with it and up to date. The justification, again, seems to be that since they paid for the work, they should get to decide this. Removing the mural has not made the space any more modern or attractive to me. There are many such historical sites and relics in this town that not a lot of people who weren't here at the time can appreciate. While this isn't a newcomer versus old-timer rant, I do believe that the response from those who are offended to simply get over it does come from people who don't understand the history. We must make sure that public spaces that hold special and significant meaning to people are not destroyed by people who do not understand the nuances. All of that's just words. The bell's been rung, can't be unrung. But we can take this opportunity to make sure that the town sets in place a policy to ensure something like this doesn't happen again. Private organizations should not be allowed to make changes to public property. It's one thing to spruce it up, clean it up, or put a fresh coat of paint, but it's something else entirely to cover something over and thereby alter the appearance. If that is being proposed, there should be a public discussion before a public body that has jurisdiction and is accountable to the taxpayers and voters. So that's pretty much what I had set down. I don't think a pound of flesh is warranted here. I think that, you know, I don't know Ryan well, but I know him, and I think that, I think he understands that some people that were here at the time, it's Rose Minor, not Minor.
I'm sorry.
But, to me, as somebody who was here at the time, Douglas actually appeared on a news report around that time, where they were talking about the haves and the have-nots. And people that think that it's tough here now from a budget perspective, weren't here then. Things were really tough back then. We had, there were six sports that were played in the district. This right here, this building was sixth through 12. This was where the sixth grade was in this space. It was a tough time, and one kid decided that she was gonna show her pride. She put together one heck of a, an artistic mural on the wall, and for those of us that were here to see that and to live through that time, it's disappointing to see that it's gone, and you really can't recover it, no matter what you do. And so I, just for me, I know you talked about a policy, I'd like to see a policy put in place that prevents it from happening again, and if it does happen again, has some teeth in terms of fixing it and putting it back. Obviously, in this case, not that great, but that's really all I had to say.
Thank you, Scott.
Scott, for the minutes, please.
So...
Thank you.
Yeah. Did you have anything for me here?
No, I just know that while I was up on vacation up in Canada, I'd asked Mr. Cortez to read into record a proposal that I had made, and I know it doesn't, it doesn't change what happened, but maybe we can take a situation that drove a little bit of a wedge into the community and use it as something to kind of help bring things back together again.
I mean, just as a way of an example, right across the street is the World War II monument. Not a lot of people understand what those trees around it mean, and if you were to have a group come in and say, "Look, we wanna maintain that, maintain that space and make it, you know, a nicer space for people to come to," and the first thing they decided was, you know, "There's moss growing everywhere because all those trees are blocking all the sunlight. Let's cut the trees down and open the space up." There's a significance to those trees that I think not a lot of people understand, which is that each one represents somebody that didn't come home, or did come home, but in a box covered with a flag. And without it being publicly discussed and those things being cut down, that, to me, would be outrageous, and I think that that's the type of thing that we need to prevent from ever happening again.
Agreed.
I wholeheartedly agree.
Thank you, Scott.
Much appreciated.
Is there anyone else that would like to? Mr. Menard? I'll work my way around this way, if that's okay.
Keith Menard, 15 Manchuck Street.
Yes.
I was the arrogant person, and I'll own my statement, which was, if you wanna say, be involved. For at least 10 years now, I've been involved in Douglas Oktoberfest, as well as a town moderator. Every year, I beg people to come forward and put their imprint on the community and try to help. And every year, the people who actually will step forward get fewer and fewer. Mr. Hogan is one of those people who I see volunteering. He was a member of the Finance Committee. He was a coach in the community. And when I heard the reference of, "We don't need a pound of flesh," we're absolutely right. Our volunteers should be commended and not ridiculed and taken out to the woodshed in public, because as our lawyer said, if you make things more difficult, you will not get what you want. It's frustrating to me to see the people who... It's frustrating to me to see the people who are stepping forward being berated the way that they were. That is not to say that a mistake wasn't made, and that a mistake should be, and that things in the future shouldn't be different. But to berate the people who actually took the time to try and make their vision of a better town a reality is folly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Amber Oliveri. I'm from Five Pinnacle Way. With all due respect to Ryan, I am the treasurer of Douglas County Basketball. I'm also a coach, have been a coach for a number of years in the organization. And the biggest thing that I take exception to is the use of the term unanimous when it comes to a board decision. I was not available to make the meeting in May for, you know, 1,001 different reasons. I did a little bit of, you know, I was on vacation, came home to the Facebook post that said that the Tiger had been painted over. Personally, I was in shock. One. I did a little research of my own. I queried some of the other board members, found out that in the May meeting, there wasn't actually, according to the minutes that were put together by the secretary, there was no discussion of the Tiger mural.
Whoa, 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 that's stat correct at all. It clearly was about a 20-minute discussion, Amber.
Well, there wasn't anything in the minutes about it.
Check the website. There is the 20 minutes.
I'm sorry?
There was clearly a 20-minute discussion. I would appreciate you weren't there. I would appreciate there were seven members out of 10 there. That's actually a pretty good turnout, as Keith said, volunteerism is not all that well. And all seven were in agreement.
Yes, and I also know that in other areas of potentially highly controversial votes, those votes have been taken via email, which there was no email.
No, the votes were taken in email, and we're not able to get a quorum together for a meeting, Amber. Come on, be fair, right? Be fair. I understand you're upset and you disagree with what happened.
This is just my viewpoint. This is my opinion. Okay? This is my viewpoint. To find out about the situation via Facebook, of all things, is, you know, inflammatory. And that's exactly what it became to the community, was inflammatory. Flames were fanned because everyone likes the anonymity, so-called anonymity, of Facebook. Okay? That's beside the point. The question, you know, again, my issue comes to the term, the use of the term unanimous. Unanimous of the people who may have been there, but not unanimous of all of the board members. Because I, for one, would have voted to keep it intact. Flat out.
I see. Correct. I meant unanimous for all the board members.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Just let me address one thing real quickly, if I could, and then I'll be more than happy to give you your point of order. When we put out a unanimous vote here, like, there's been unanimous votes on this board where I haven't been present, or Mr. Cortez hasn't been present. So usually, when you reference a unanimous vote on any board or committee, it's a unanimous vote of all members present. It's implied. So, and I think that's, I think we're getting hung up a little bit on semantics, but I do understand where your point is.
And the reason that I come to that point is because of the validation that was being done on Facebook to, you know, potentially, you know, our board is listed on a public website with our email addresses and our phone numbers, just like any other public board, I would imagine.
Oh, believe me, my email filled up, too.
Exactly. So this was, this was my concern.
Understood. Thank you. Your point of order, Scott.
I don't think any constructive is going to happen from back and forth between members of the audience. I think everything should be directed through you.
Agreed.
And I know Ryan won't respond, but it was somebody else's time to speak. We all get our time to speak, and if somebody wants to react to something, they should ask people permission. It's just point of order.
I mean, I apologize for interrupting, but I...
Mr. Chairman, I don't think we should get into the organizational functioning of a private organization. It's outside of our purview with selectmen.
Agreed.
The way I just see it overview is that a good, an error was made not to cause any injury or something, and, you know, sort of, let's move on here.
I, I agree. That's why I said I'm limiting the discussion to 20 minutes. People do have a right to say it's in a municipal building, they want to have their concerns voiced, absolutely.
And going forward, the point is well taken. We should have a policy that other than the future, anytime you're doing something with municipal building, the selectmen would approve.
And I think Mr. Yacino summed it up perfectly, of the bell's been rung, it can't be unrung. So it's how we move forward. So what do we add on time-wise? Mr. Bowman?
Yeah, about...
About three minutes.
Three minutes.
Gary Vacchioni, just like to state that the fact that volunteers aren't held accountable was disproven by the two hours you spent with me kicking me off the conservation board the other day.
You're out of order already. This has absolutely nothing to do with the Tiger. So if you'd like to go down that road, you can.
No, I do have a question on the Tiger. Mr. Hogan wrote, read from a letter and said that you made the point, I believe. Excuse me. You made the point that only the people that were on the board, the people that, the entire board was not notified. Is that, is that right? Is that what I heard?
So I believe the way that he had read it off is that it was a unanimous vote based off of the members that were there, as that's implied.
The letter it gave us to the one he wrote states that it was unanimous by the entire board. You have that in your, in your case, so...
If so, I misstated. There were seven out of 10 board members there, and all seven...
So I'll wrap up real quick. I think that Mr. Hogan made a really big mistake. I think he did it on purpose. And I also think that now that we've established that we want to move forward, I suggest that he have the boys that he coaches be part of fundraising to repaint the Tiger and possibly be involved with a new Tiger being painted over with a local artist. I didn't hear the letter that you had written 10 minutes from the meeting go. Are we on the same wavelength as far as that goes?
We can. I can summarize it quickly. You'll give me a little latitude on this part of it?
It's your meeting.
Long story short was, we can't unring the bell. It would probably make sense to have a student up at the high school utilize repainting of the Douglas Tiger, be it here at the municipal center, if one of the schools would prefer to have it up where it would be more in line with an athletic team, considering, you know, this isn't a school anymore, it's a municipal center, and it's for, you know, a volunteer league. But if we wanted to put a new Tiger up in the gymnasium, and a senior wanted to take that on as a senior project to cover community service hours, if Mr. Hogan would be willing to donate some of the funds towards that project as a good faith gesture, that's up to his organization. I can't force him to do that.
How do we go from tonight to having a new Tiger put on the board?
So ultimately, it would be a matter of, if you wanted to go in, without it being a senior project, and have somebody do it yourself, I think it would fall under the policy that we're looking at.
I think what I'd like to see is suggestions come to us, come to this board, is, you know, if we do have a senior or somebody in the school system, that'd be great. And if they came forward and they had more artistic talent than me, which is almost everyone, and they couldn't, they couldn't have a Tiger come out, you know, bring us a proof or whatever, then we'll look at that. If there's another way to do it and somebody else wants to do it another way, by all means, please come in and talk to us, and we'll listen to it. And I think at some point, we'll make a decision to get to where I think where everybody wants to be.
Absolutely. And I mean...
Could I ask to be on the next meeting so that we could talk to people, whether it's on my Facebook page, views from Douglas County, or from the Douglas Dynamic site, and see if there's a general consensus as to whether people want to go this direction?
Well, I'd be...
Just so we keep it moving forward.
With your permission. I can address that, actually. I mean, we, every meeting that comes in, if you look under the fourth item, that falls under call to order. You see call to order, pledge of allegiance, chairman's announcement, citizens forum. You can bring this to us any meeting that we have. Because even if it's on, if it's on the agenda or not, if you heard when I first opened up the meeting, "Is there anyone here for something not on our agenda today?" Feel free to come into any meeting that you, that we have, and under citizens forum, say, "Mr. Chairman, I've got an update for you on the Douglas Tiger," and I'll be more than happy to give you time to sit down and express where you're at with it.
I don't have a lot of experience with this, but can you tell me why you wouldn't want to have an agenda item? Because there are certain people who've just come in or have been here that want to speak, and you're limiting it to 20 minutes, so...
Because frankly, I'll be perfectly square, and if it gets people upset with me, so be it, because my email blows up as it is anyway, is that this has literally been drawn out to a point where it's borderline ridiculous. I understand what's happened. It can't be undone. And I've entertained it as agenda items, I've responded to email accusations on it, I've defended somebody that's actually trying to volunteer, because I felt that, in all honesty, his intentions were pure. He was trying to help the town. And I've got a lot of other things that come down under agenda items that are far more pressing to this community than the Tiger in the gym, and I'm sorry if that sounds insensitive. But we have budgetary things that are going on. We're trying to do economic development. I'm trying to bring in marijuana into the town for an additional revenue source. I've entertained about as much time on this Tiger issue as I'm willing to entertain as chairman. And if that upsets people, I'm up for reelection soon. Run against me. You can come and grab this seat, and I'll be more than happy to step away from it. But my time discussing this has officially come to an end unless it comes under chairman's and citizens forum.
Has citizens forum happened already?
Uh, it has.
It's past the 20 minutes.
No more.
All right.
Can't come anymore? Want me... Is it closed?
We're, we're closed on the...
Yeah, I just came up here to...
I'll tell you what, being...
Have the vote on the Tiger, I guess. It's just, forget it. It's just, I just came up here.
I can't take it. I'm going to tell you, you can.
Oh, I can't speak?
Absolutely.
I thought it was, I'm sorry.
I'd like to bring this to an end, but I'll tell you, I'll wrap it up with you as you came up, you didn't have an opportunity, and I'll let you, I'll give you your two minutes. Okay? Please, sir, go ahead.
Kevin Connors, Four Orchard Place.
Yes, sir.
I've been here for 15, 20 years. Are you Mr.?
Mr. Hogan.
I don't fault you. I understand from what I've read in the situation, first of all, many people who have gone through two and a half, put a lot of sweat and blood in that gym with kids that are now in and out of our community, who have done very well. And remember when we had no money?
Mm-hmm.
And I was a basketball coach at the high school and worked in youth programs. And that Tiger, or that gym, I'm not blaming Mr. Hogan. I'm sure his intentions, I just was trying to, what I didn't understand was, was that it seemed like the sampling of people that were asked was not indicative of that woman who did that was back in 1973. My wife, all my kids went to school here, my daughter played basketball here, she's all-time leading, I mean, it doesn't matter about basketball. What it matters was is that I think, I think we could have had more people, and maybe it was the time, I think you, what you did, you brought people in to do it, right, that painted over it.
Sheriff's Department.
Yeah, and I think that's great. But I just think it could have been, possibly more people could have been asked from different age groups who live in this town, not necessarily townies, but it just came to a point where when they saw that, it was, it was something that's iconic and something that kids, when they come into that gym, whether they're, whether it's the band, whether it is sports, whether it is a rally, whatever, it was just part of a Douglas tradition. And my brother-in-law, people like that, they were, people were stunned. They asked me, "Why did they do that?" And I didn't even realize it was done. And certainly, you probably had the greatest intentions, and you, I know, you have other things that marijuana cafes are certainly very important. But if you understand from the point of view, I'm six, if you put your blood, sweat, and tears into this town, and it just seems like some of the things that were very special to us, that was something, it might have been overlooked, and I'm not blaming you, sir, because I know what it's like to run a youth basketball league, and I know what you try to do, and, and I just want to say, I don't think we should blame him. I don't necessarily think, though, like Mr. Vacchioni said, that going to a senior project might be the way to do it. It might be, it might be a great way to transition into do something like that, or there might be another way. But certainly, look at more opportunities. And, I mean, I'm still proud to say, you know, I'm a Douglas Tiger, and, you know, there's ways to do that, I thought, by putting up with a picture of it. Is that what you're going to do, I think, or is, is okay? But the woman who did do that is not in town anymore. There were many people that put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into that. And it's, and it was just, the way it went, the way it happened, I was just, I said, "Okay, well, that's, towns change. Things change, people change, it's different." It just, it hit a lot of people at the heart, I think, and, and that's all I'm saying, is I don't blame this gentleman, and time marches on, but if they can find a reasonable way to find something else to replace that or do that, and especially involve with students, that would be great. And I would certainly be involved in something, sitting with kids or on the war to do it. So thank you very much.
No problem.
Do you happen to know where Rose's current address is?
I have it.
Do you have it? Okay, great.
She's in... I have.
So, and I, ladies, I didn't mean to sound insensitive to it, and I mean, it's...
No, I know.
I understand the nostalgia portion that goes along with a lot of these things, and there is hometown pride, and, you know, I guess I'd fallen to one of the newbies, because I've only been here for seven years, so, until I get my 30 and...
We're all not newbies, we're all citizens of the town, whether you're seven years of 37 years.
Thank you.
People want what's best, and by pointing fingers at people who did this, and I say this sincerely, I don't know, but I know, I certainly don't think you woke up one day and said, "Let's paint over a Tiger and piss off people in town." I don't think that was your intention, and so...
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name's Patty Dix. I think I've talked to you on Facebook through Messenger a couple of times.
Yes.
My biggest thing is, I'm 60 years old. I went to school here. I went to the Graham School School. We had to walk to the town hall to have lunch. The VFW, fourth grade, I went there. So to come here and graduate in the mid-'70s and walk in to go vote tonight and not say it, it's very disheartening. I, for one, got married when I was 25 years old. I've got two great kids, I've got two grandkids. I was on recreation. I had a basketball team. I had a softball team. Every time that, say, during my, having my kids, parents donated their time to take my kids off the field so I could coach their kids. We didn't get paid, we had fundraisers. We did not have anything from recreation to take care of the gym, take care of the fields, nothing. We were there selling T-shirts, we were there selling hot chocolate during games, we were doing everything possible. My biggest thing is, when this was all done, and we found, I found out after through Facebook, and it shouldn't have come through Facebook, it should have went through some website. Douglas has five or six websites, including all the offices in this town building. To me, that's a town gym, not just for basketball, it's for all recreation. If somebody wanted to come in there and play soccer certain times a week, it's a town facility. On the other hand, when it wasn't posted on any other websites, I didn't hear it until after it was done. And I think that made, like Scott said, like he said, it was done after the fact. There's newspapers, there's mailing to the post office, there's your websites, they've got recreation websites. It should have been publicized more, because evidently, it didn't get, to me, I'm 60 years old, I just moved from one end of the town to the other. So with that said, I think to go forward, it should be more, instead of on Facebook, it should have came through Dynamic Douglas, it should have came through the political page, it should have went through the historical Renaissance page, any other except word of mouth and being plastered all over Facebook.
That will be taken into account when we move forward on getting a policy published and presented to the community. And as I...
There should be some timeline, because a lot of people don't, don't get on Facebook every day. I'm not one of those. But I mean, if you're going to do a mailing, you have bulk mailing, you know, anybody in, in, anyone say...
I'm hesitant to do any kind of bulk mailing, because we've done those in the past, and then this board gets crucified for frivolously spending money. then this board gets crucified for frivolously spending money. So it's, you know, I mean, with the way society's going now, Facebook or any kind of social media is actually a really effective tool to get through to the community.
Oh, yeah, TikTok, uh, kinda ticked a lot of people off.
Facebook is fantastic for that.
Yeah.
So...
If somebody come in and say they should volunteer, I've done my volunteering. You know, I mean, I was a teenager when I started doing softball and basketball. My son was 10 years old when I ended it, because I had other things to do.
Understood. So, and I appreciate, and I'm, I'm glad you were able to come in and express how you feel. We did hear you. We are gonna work towards a policy. Mr. Hogan is extremely apologetic about the way that things had transpired. And again, just kinda echoing against Scott's point, we can't unring the bell. So how we have to be judged in looking on it is how we make sure that, A, it doesn't happen again, and what can we do moving forward to at least make this as right as possible.
I mean, I went to school here, my kids were involved all in the sports, even my grandkids, they're 86, and now it's, it's, how do you explain it? Everything's gone.
It, it's...
That's what represented us back in the '70s.
I, I wish I had an answer, other than bell bottoms.
Right.
Two things, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would hesitate to commit to, you know, making certain the town communicates on non-official channels, and Facebook is absolutely a non-official, not a town official vehicle. That's one. Two, Mr. Hogan, leadership's tough, right? This was a board decision, and yet there's no board member that was present who made that vote here today. So that was a little disappointing to me. I don't know if...
Well, I...
Top job's fun, right?
I think people get very intimidated at the way things are handled on certain websites. I took a lot of personal shots over the last six weeks, and I made the decision myself to be the face for this. There was no, no need to, you know, I'm the president, we made a board decision. I just felt I should be the one standing in front of this. I didn't want to ask anyone else to do that, concerning some of the things that have been said on Facebook.
Well...
I just wanna make one more point. Ms. Dix mentioned something about fundraising and funding from the town. We don't, the Recreation Commission gets $3,000 each year in the budget, or has for the last five years. Douglas Youth Basketball has not received any of that money, we didn't ask for any of that money. We do it entirely, all the town gives us is the use of that facility. So we do the rest through registration...
That was the same with us, when we get soccer and basketball, we ask for nothing because we raised that.
And I think that's the way to do it. I just wanted to clarify that.
All right.
So with that, I want the record to reflect as the president of the baseball program, Mr. Hogan has also donated an inordinate amount of time as a scheduler, a monumental task in which he does tremendously well. So personally, Ryan, and I'm sure I can speak for the board, this notwithstanding, thank you for everything.
Thank you. Okay, so one more thing, I don't get to public forum very often. I'd like to thank Adam Furno, the facilities manager. He's always very helpful with us and willing to work with us any way we can. I don't get a public forum like this very often, so I just wanna say thank you for him before we're done.
Chairman, just one, be the last word, I don't know. Aside from the tiger issue, I'd like to commend you and your organization for what you do. Many years ago, I lived in Quincy, I was on the school committee, and we used to encourage organizations such as yours. We didn't even charge gym fees or custodian fees, because either the activity wouldn't be there, or the town's gonna have to pick up the cost of it. So you're donating thousands of dollars of your time, et cetera, to run programs for the youth in Douglas. So I think that let's not get lost with that when we're unraveling the problem with the tiger.
Thank you.
So hopefully we can move forward on that, but...
So, I'm gonna...
Also, the same thing about band organizations.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna wrap it up with this really quickly, is that if there's ideas or suggestions or, or things that people would like to do regarding the Douglas tiger, send them in via email. My email address is on the website. You can send it over to me. I can bat it across. Matt, if we get enough of a consensus based off of, hey, you know, we've polled, however you guys choose to poll one another, and say this is what we'd like to do, and it can come in, and it's constructive, and it's talking about what we're doing moving forward, I would entertain putting a, putting an agenda item on to discuss it at a later date. But as of, like, any more harping on, you know, the tiger's been removed, I'm done talking about it. I'm more than happy to discuss what we're doing moving forward. If they have questions on policy to make sure it doesn't happen again, I'm happy to field those as well.
Can I just say one final thing? I, I just, because I've heard this talk several times, people talk about, you know, volunteers and the work that they do, and I 100% agree. You know as well as I that up until about a year ago, I was in meetings for all the stuff I was involved in four nights a week. But I don't think that you can allow how much money somebody generates or gives to the town to justify the altering of public property. And I think that your policy will take care of that, but I don't want it to get, I don't want the message to get lost. One, yes, we appreciate all the work that the volunteers do, but also, it has to be controlled, because if the work that the volunteers do can't justify what happened.
Nope.
That's, that's all I'm concerned about.
Agreed.
And just last thing, I think if the board goes forward, or if they do have any kind of, I think Rose Minor should be involved in it.
That...
I think having her as the person, I think she, the idea coming, I mean, what she did, her creative talent, and others who helped do that, very similar to a project. I don't know how, I went to another school, but I just know through my wife and other people that I think she should be involved. She might love to have students who are in the art program at school, or to do something like that, to continue a tradition that she did with a lot of work into. Thank you very much.
Quickly and brief.
Just a straw vote, is the board behind the idea of repainting the wall?
No, not at all.
Not going in.
At this point, it's up to whatever the town would like to do. I'll support whatever the general public comes up with what's going to cause peace and harmony throughout the community as it pertains to the tiger.
Does it have to be a board vote?
With all due respect, the body out here is not at liberty to ask you guys to vote on something...
We've gotta run the meeting.
Yeah.
You're supposed to wrap this up about 10 minutes.
So, and Gary, we've been very vocal on it. Like, I'm more than willing to support something replacing the tiger that was out there if that's the will of the community.
Thank you.
But at this point in time, it's not up for a board vote. Okay, so, item number three has been postponed. So until, what is it, the September, potentially in September?
September 18th, if that's what chooses.
All right.
Yeah, the next is the amendment to the Energy Service Agreement and possible votes.
Can I ask for a quick bio break before we jump right into that? Because that one...
I would just suggest, because we have a volunteer here, that we bump a little bit and get the town moderator in.
Yeah, let's do that.
Before our bio break.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
The town moderator.
Oh, wait, oh, I thought, I thought, you were on the agenda today? No.
No.
All right, get out of here. All right, sorry.
Will we make you happy if we push you on?
Donna Hardy came in, she wanted to talk.
Donna, can you give me five minutes?
I'll give you 10, gee.
Thank you, you're very sweet. Five. So, all right.
There you go.
So, Matt, I am going to come back to agenda items.
Are we, are we running?
Four and five. I wanna go to, yes, we're back on.
Thank you for telling me.
I did, you weren't listening. So we have Donna Hardy here for a Dynamic Douglas Day recap, and I apologize for the tardiness.
I want to thank you guys for allowing me to come here and talk again.
You don't have anything you're gonna throw at us out of that box, right?
No.
You have a right to be here.
Thank you, Hal. I really appreciate, that's very nice of you to say. So it was a successful day. Probably had more than 500 people that attended. One of the girls that was running the raffle tables with us, Beatrice Escobar, was, if I pronounced your name wrong, I'm sorry, Beatrice. She was handling the raffle table, and she was trying to do a clicker at the same time, and she stopped doing it around 11:30 or so, and it was already 391 people at that point in time, so...
The turnout.
Yeah, it was good. And then we, we had everybody providing for the admission, a can of non-perishable food. We had people that came in with boxes and boxes of canned food, so...
Good day for the food pantry.
Good day for the food pantry. Lori Colbert, co-chair, she dropped it off, and we had donated, the town donated 251 pounds of food.
Excellent.
Yeah, so that was pretty exciting.
That's good.
So, and we had amazing help from Hal Davis and Tim Bone, and I just wanted to announce to them.
Elbow, elbow for...
Yes, yes. I didn't get to see, I only got to see Tim in there, because I got to dunk him. I didn't get to see the chief. I was running around a little bit crazy that day myself, so I decided that since I couldn't find a clown that was reasonably priced, I decided, can't find a solution, you become the solution. So I was Sunshine the Clown for the day. Nice. Which the kids absolutely adored. Gave them little clown noses that my husband, Scott Hardy, recommended. I wanted to make sure that was on there. He recommended that, so the kids were just so excited. I came right up to them, and they were all excited. We had a bunch of pictures of people that were posting it and stuff like that. And then, of course, all the newspapers wanted to contact me, and you know me, I'm not really one for words, so... So, but I am very appreciative of the town coming forward and helping make this day really amazing, so...
They're gonna do it again.
We're doing it again next year. We already have a theme, and I already have a lot of ideas that I'd like to do, and I'd like more help from the town, and I'd have, we have a lot of women that want to come forward and help us run the event, so it's, you know, many hands make the...
Work light.
Work light. Thank you very much, so...
I'd like to offer my apologies for not being in attendance, but my travel plan...
I, and I was willing to go pick him up, too. But when he told me it was a 12-hour drive, I was like, oh, I have to, have to say no to that.
I had minded that, I was out of state that weekend, but it's we that should be thanking you for doing this.
Well, I, I really appreciated the opportunity to be able to do it.
I should probably apologize to the public, because there was a lot of them, I'm sure, wanted to dunk me.
Including...
There was.
Yeah.
I mean, I do want to note that Denise Willard...
Double their intake. Exactly.
Yes. Denise Willard, and I originally came forward to do this idea, and Denise came up with the idea to an old-time American, you know, circus big talk type of thing, so we just kind of rolled with it, and then, and what came out of it was just really amazing. It was nice, because I took a step back at one point in time to just, before I came out to the crowd as the clown, and I just was like, wow, this is really nice, everybody came out. So, yeah.
So do you want to share what your theme is for next year, or are we keeping that top secret?
No. Lori and I decided that we want to do a winter Candy Land theme. So, and I've already had requests from Troop 25 in Uxbridge and Troop 316, that they want to continue to try to help for next year. Troop 25 has already asked if they can be me, Sunshine the Clown, that day. So, how exactly we'll work that, but, because I have a couple ideas myself of what I want to do, but I'm glad that the town came forward and, and made pretty much my, my dream come true, basically, so...
I think it was, it was just the right event and right when the town needed it.
Exactly.
So...
I, I do want to tell you, to date, right now, I received another $10 donation, so I'm $78.33 from my goal of what I'd like to provide to the senior center and the VFW. The senior, my goal, after talking to the highway department, was to provide them $1,200. $1,200 for a flagpole, so I'd each like to give them $1,200. So I'm $78.33 short as of right now. But I'm hoping with more donations that come forward that we'll, we'll get that, so...
If you don't have...
I won't close it yet.
If you don't have your donations by the next selectmen's meeting, come back in, and I will personally make the deficit up to you.
Oh, okay.
And I'll split it with you. All right. Three ways.
I, I think, I, yeah, I think, you know, Mike Hughes and Dave, Mr. Critis should also, you know, partake in it, and perhaps Matt...
How about 20 bucks a piece?
Because I was trying to get in contact with Matt to be in the dunk tank, because we had a lot of people that were willing to, to put you in the, you know, really...
If you're gonna put Matt up there, I'll, I'll be there next year.
Okay, all right.
Probably charge a buck a throw if Matt's gonna...
I did have a few people that asked if Suzanne would be there, too, and I had to tell them, no, I'm sorry, she's not. I can't reveal who that would be, I'm sorry.
Chief, I think we may need to...
Start talking personal security detail. For the board of selectmen and the town administrator.
But I'll be coming, I have to come back probably on Thursday to get the property use form. So, and I already have people, I have a DJ lined up for next year, and then I already have, I have a band that came forward that wants to do it, too, so...
That's awesome.
And the fire department wants to help out more, so, because unfortunately, the chief wasn't able to help that day, so... It was, it was a really blessed day. I was very happy. Unfortunately, at 2:00 in the afternoon, it kind of rained a little bit, and then it stopped. And then I made the executive decision at 3:00 to close it down because of severe weather storms and tornado warnings coming through, so really didn't want a tornado in the middle of the field.
That could have made it more interesting.
So...
If the fire's gonna be there next year, and we had the police, maybe, you know, a tug of war or something between the two departments...
You up for that, chief?
You think you could arrange that?
But I just, before you guys close, I wanted to, I wanted to give a t-shirt to Hal and to Tim for all their...
You two guys with your t-shirts.
Tim put in a lot of time, Tim was very patient and understanding with my texts and calls and calls, and calls, with dealing with this, because, you know, being that I'm, I'm not so much a newbie here, but I've never done a vendor event of this size outside, and so it was a challenge for me, so, but I was just very grateful that Tim was very helpful.
Well, from everything that I've read and the, and the pictures that I've seen and the overall turnout, I would say that it, it looked like you knew what you were doing.
Well, I, I was, sometimes I was ringing it. I'll be honest. So, but I needed sizes you guys are, I don't have that many left. I have a couple 2XLs.
Would you rate them?
I have large, and I have a medium, and, yeah, I have a couple mediums and small, so I don't know what sizes you want.
I'll take a medium.
Okay. I did want to give something to Kevin, too. So would you like a v-neck, or would you like a...
I'll take the v-neck.
Okay.
It's very fashionable, Tim.
Very fashionable.
Mrs. Bone has an ID.
I knew it wasn't for you.
Who's that for? Who's that for, a medium?
Yeah, wishful thinking, Ben.
How, fortunately, I don't have any XLs left. I have...
Thank you.
I have smalls. I don't know what size your wife is.
I, you said you had one large.
I have one large. Would you like the large? Okay. And I'd like to give one to Mr. Morris, too, because he was very helpful and...
I can guarantee you want a 2XL coming this way, I'm not a small boy.
It is.
I have a 2XL, and thank, thank you, Hal.
Thank you very much, Donna.
Keep your elbow warm.
Yeah? 2XL will probably be a belly shirt with the size that I'm growing out later.
I was in New York, but I did, was able to get on Facebook and see the photos.
Well, I have a, I'll have, I can show you a photo of me in the full, full getup.
I saw it.
You did see it? Any of you guys miss it?
Chief, you were in the dunk tank?
I was.
Was there a big line?
I warmed it up to Tim.
You warmed it up to Tim?
It went pretty well. I just-
Did you spend a little time in the drink?
Yeah, I did warm that.
Lexington Valley Tribune, Lexington Valley Tribune just had an article in there too.
Yes, I got that at home.
Somebody came up to me today in the office and said, so you're pretty famous, you've had two articles written about you, and I said, yes. And I said, but, it wasn't really for me, it was for the town, so.
In all honesty, Donna, thank you very much, because it was exactly what the town needed at just the right time.
Perfect timing, yeah.
Yeah, so, we'll do it again next year, and I can't wait to do it, I'm already excited.
Well, let's hope that there's not a polarizing event prior to a coming up, so.
Other than the tug of war.
Other than the tug of war between police and fire.
Certainly set something up for the tug of war, that would be fun. Alright, well, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you, Donna.
Onto Oktoberfest. Uh, no. No, I'm just saying.
So, alright, so we gotta talk about the amendment to the Energy Service Agreement and possible votes. Mr. Administrator?
Kind of a radical shift in tempo and excitement.
Thank you, chief.
Aye.
I'm gonna distribute two documents to you by purposes of background. You'll note that the first is a memo to the members of the joint purchasing group from the attorneys that represent us in this. It's marked confidential. I'm gonna tell you that we're at the end of this settlement period.
Yeah.
And, you know, it really doesn't make any difference if, if this is approved by you tonight, it's gonna be a matter of public record, these documents will have to be released. So I don't think I'm doing anything wrong by giving you the two documents. One is the memo, the second is the text. So the issue has been settled, and many of the communities that participate in the joint purchasing group have already signed this amendment. It's on a very sensitive time track. I know there's a date on one of those documents that says August 21st. That's when we were actually sent the document, we weren't briefed until after that, and then, between Suzanne's vacation and my vacation, there was some research that needed to be done. Town meeting authorized the Board of Selectmen to handle this issue. And so, I cannot sign this amendment or this settlement on behalf of the town, it has to be the board. By way of background, I'll try to keep this concise, there's a significant number of communities have joined together in this purchasing group to buy electricity for the aggregation group that's made of, and the price is made available to our residents as well as to the town, if we choose to take it. And there was a bidding process that resulted in a low bidder, was a group called Public Power came in at 10.12 cents per kilowatt hour. And this is an important fact, the next lowest bid was 10.63 cents. By way of reference, Power has been selling anywhere from 9 cents to 13, 14 cents, it varies with the cost of energy and it varies with other considerations. The current market rate is 10.9 cents. So those are three key markers, lowest bid was 10.12, the next highest, the next lowest bid was 10.63, and the market is 10.9. In the course of planning out its financial statements, Public Power realized that, quite frankly, they were going to be operating at a loss at 10.12 cents per kilowatt hour. And they looked at the contract and tried to find a way, frankly, out of it. And they used a rather vaguely written clause in the contract regarding to a legal event that occurred subsequent to the entering into of the contract, that fundamentally changed the energy marketplace. And they argued that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the way it was going to handle the rates paid to solar energy producers was going to have a significant impact on the market, and therefore, it was their excuse to come back to us with an increase in price. And the price that they suggested was quite a bit higher than the price they had bid. So, all of the communities, and like I said, it ranges from the South Coast communities of Kuschnet and Westport and Dayton, as all the way across Worcester County and some, all the intervening counties, quite a few communities involved, got together and said, really, that's, that's kind of a violation of everything we hold holy in procurement. You bid a price, you have to stick to that price, and we're not gonna let you get away with that excuse. And so we were kind of headed towards litigation. The settlement agreement that was arrived at basically will take Public Power out of the red and in danger of not being able to operate, because that, those one-hundredths of a penny-
Add up.
Add up across millions of people and that are being served, millions of dollars. Individual homeowner, the individual ratepayer just doesn't see it that way. So what was settled upon was a price of 10.43 cents per kilowatt hour. For the average homeowner, that's a $2 per month increase, that was the actual statistic I found in my records today, that we discussed in the briefing. For the sake of that, we also got, you see in this fairly, you know, two, three-page-long document, we rewrote portions of the contract that were vague in order to prevent Public Power or any other future vendor that bids on this contract from being able to take advantage of a similar loophole. 10.43 cents is still well below the next lowest bidder, and it is also still substantial savings from the market rate, you know, of almost .005 cents per kilowatt hour. So the hope was that this could be approved tonight and signed, and that would finalize the settlement with Public Power.
How much is the typical homeowner going to save under the new arrangement? I guess National Grid is the alternative, right?
Well, yeah, it is, and that would be their, their standard, the so-called tariff, standard tariff for residential user. Just doing real quick math, Selectman Davis, if the average homeowner's gonna pay $2 more per month, going up .003 cents per kilowatt hour, if they went up another six, they would be paying $6 more per month.
So we're saving $1 a month.
Still saving them $4 a month over what-
Okay. And doesn't that fluctuate during time of year too?
So, this contract is fixed rate, which is our, we locked into it.
Yeah.
But, yeah, during the year, there'll be two, there's usually a summer filing and a winter filing for Power.
We're still ahead of the game for the whole-
Yeah.
Contract.
I'd entertain a motion, if anybody's got one.
I move that we approve, that's presented. And you said most of the other communities have already done so?
Yes.
Second?
Made by Mike, seconded by Hal.
Just for discussion, if we were to say no, we signed a deal and the deal was 10-
10.12.
10.12. What would happen?
Is there majority rule among the towns?
My question, exactly.
Two-thirds or something.
There really isn't, this is a cooperative buy, so we'd be kind of out.
We'd be out of the buy?
Yeah.
And we would have to litigate against-
We have to litigate the 10.12, and meanwhile, they could charge us-
A lot more.
A lot more.
And we would bear those costs of litigation alone? So I have a motion made and seconded.
Is there any other discussion?
None from me.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can I get three copies, please?
Yeah, you take this one.
This one, if you want.
Suzanne needs everybody to sign.
Okay.
So that's official.
Is it just gonna be Kevin that signs?
You can, however the board wants to do it.
Alright, because there's only one spot.
I think Kevin's delegate.
We have as many spots as we can.
We have the vote on the record.
Kevin, you can vote for a length for city increase.
Sure.
You're tough.
Doesn't that mean you automatically sign that for central mass planning?
I don't need to protest, right?
No, that's Tim.
I'm signing.
On your buy, right?
Hold on, let me look.
Got to pack it today.
Did you?
Yeah, I haven't read it yet.
I gave you it.
Under municipality, by your name, I'll fill in the rest of it if you want to just sign it. Sign three copies, please.
That's one. I have a copy of it over here.
I'll give you mine, do you have another copy?
No, it's good.
Do one of you guys, I need these for the minutes, so can one of you guys give him your clean copy?
A suggestion would be, because I'm sure townspeople upon seeing this will wonder what exactly is going on, I wonder if we should put something on the website that we can-
Yeah, the purchasing group is going to produce talking points and other educational materials to-
Thank you.
Bring people up to speed on that.
Okay. So the town administrator evaluation process discussion.
So I just wanted this on, to keep my own feet to the fire, I owe you documents. So in my contract, we were supposed to have done goals no later than December 1st, 2017, and my evaluation by July 24th of this year, once annually, is all it says in the language of the contract. I've been given the instrument that you used in the past with Mr. Gazinski, I have some comments about it, I think it actually misses a couple of key aspects of the job. I want to add asset management, risk management, some of the other things that I pretty actively engage in, it's part of the job, to those kind of, to the conversation. I'm on like page four of just the goals.
You need to add snacks in there.
Snacks. You know, I lugged a whole case of blueberry soda back from Bar Harbor, so help yourself. So my thought is, I would be finishing that document, finishing my comments on the evaluation instrument, and do a self-evaluation, all four, September 18th.
Okay.
Alright.
That works. It's not out of turn, I'm the chairman, it's not out of turn.
Can never be out of turn.
No, absolutely not. I personally want to go on record, Matt, and say that regardless of what mechanism you choose to bring in front of me personally, and I'm certainly not going to speak for the rest of the board, that you've blown your benchmarks way out of the water. I think you exceed expectations in just about every way, shape, or form that we could measure you on your performance.
I appreciate that, but I'm going off Selectman Bone's comment, the formality is a good thing.
Yeah.
Because it institutionalizes how any board would interact with any town administrator.
Understood.
So we owe it to anybody who's ever gonna sit in these seats again to make sure we-
Oh no, you're not allowed to leave, you've already passed the bio.
We'll find you.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Alright, so September 18th.
And if we could get some notes together prior to his self-evaluation and things like that, because I have some ideas and thoughts that I'd like to talk with the rest of the board about as well. We can do that in the executive session at some point, at a future date.
To be named later.
To be named later. That's all I got on it.
And jumping ahead, Mr. Chairman, I don't have a report, I've been on vacation, so I'm out of that.
We're passing on the administrator's report? That's fantastic.
We're not even gonna ask about the vacation.
Well, I was gonna do that under old business or new business.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not. So, let's talk about the minutes. Somebody missed something on the agenda.
So we've got the clock.
The clock doesn't work, it's been 4:17.
Multiple offenses on the inaccurate agenda. Let's talk about the administrator's secretary's evaluation.
She gets all high marks from me.
Of course she does.
Of course she does.